At this time, I'd like to call our July, uh, make that more education meeting to order. I've got a little bit after six, so with all due respect, we will get started and move forward. Um, at this time, we always turn to Tommy Cade. If I would like everyone, if you would please rise, I'd like to turn a moment of silence. And then Paula, I think we have some children here from summer school. Do you think we'd be able to work if they came and led us in the place of allegiance?
I think that'd be great.
Okay.
But we do this, remember, a little better. Some of us were, some of you out there. And I see them every day, they're coming back wounded and whatever, so, uh, we don't respect them enough, we don't give them enough credit. And for that reason, we play them on the sound.
We also say the place of allegiance, so we were going to put them in a, I don't think they're expecting this to go this way, so we have to show them. Do you want to tell us who you are, what your name is, and like, what school you go to?
While it come in, um, Chappelle and America.
Good.
My appearance, um, something.
Okay.
Uh, we did power here.
First, our agenda tonight is approval of our minutes. We had both the registered meeting on June 15th, then we had a special call meeting on June 30th. Councilor, the 30th, since two of our working groups were not here, should you add the three approvals, because we had that separate with the three that were here?
No, should the entire board need to approve, it's the minutes.
Yes.
Motion that the board schedule meeting on 15th and special call meeting on June 30th, 2014, been approved.
I have motion, bring it here second. I have motion in the second. Any other discussion, any questions? If not all in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose, so moved. Also, at that time, we were willing to adopt the agenda, there were a couple of changes, I think, or these additions. Is that right, Mr. Bell?
That's correct.
So, for example, on our overnight, here's a quest, we have a request that we'll talk about for our men's cross-country team, that will be coming from, um, Rita, Esther Wood. And also, I think on our new personnel, we need to add the name of Lindy Beck. She is a pre-K teacher at our Olive Valley School, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In the background, we'll go through for those. Is that right? We have that request from Rita, we're going to go into, uh, Tony State Park, August 7th, 9th, for teen planning and goal setting, it will be our men's cross-country team, is that right? Chaparrals will be, uh, Mike Hunter, Toby Sward, along with Rita. And, uh, we raised a ton of ideas to gas grill raffle, is that correct? Did I miss anything? Okay. So with those two additions, any other changes we can make to the agenda? I take a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to adopt.
Have a motion in the second, up here.
Yes.
Have a motion in a second to adopt, all in favor, say if I say an aye. And you oppose, so moved. Very good, thank you, board members. First is our spot on people programs, regulations done, but presentations, and then follow we have our 2014 summer school overview.
We do, and actually Ms. Houghton and Ms. Cotton are gonna take over with that.
Okay, guys, in terms of, so while they're coming up, I'll just give you a few highlights. We just finished summer school last Thursday, and it's for four weeks. It was a session for four weeks, Monday through Thursday, eight to two. We served lunch there, we did the summer beginning program for MPT. We had 37 students, and we had really good time. We did some, um, small group to large group, rhythm and dancing, frozen DVD, and then we also used a new resource that we've gotten this year, which is comprehension toolkit, so we focused a lot on the comprehension component of, um, comprehending questions that would be similar to what we do in the TRC, which are assessments we do, uh, hang read during the school year, and for the EOG. So, it was really successful, kids had a lot of fun, we had a grand finale. Ms. Cotton made a deal with the children that she would bring a lamb for me to kiss.
Which we do have video of for you at the conclusion of this presentation.
Oh, it's here. So, um, Ms. Cotton graciously went with me, and we both kissed, and then Dr. Baldwin showed up, and then much fanfare from the students he fell into, so, I hope you have that.
I did.
But so tonight, Dr. Baldwin was at our finale, and he was really pleased with what he saw, and some of it's ready to do, so we wanted to share some of that with you tonight. Some of them will be sharing things that they made from the group, from specific books that they were using in comprehension toolkit. Some of the others did some writing of different pieces of summer school that I want to share with you. And they have a couple that were part of a reader's theater, and that would be like, um, a play that is read aloud with no staging or props or costume, um, just the actual script. And these two guys will be reading from, um, a reader's theater called Happy National Pig Day. Uh, and there were a couple of other readers, so you won't get the whole thing, but you'll get parts of it, so they're just gonna be sharing their parts. So, this is, can you tell them your name again? And this is.
Liam.
So they're gonna read from Happy National Pig Day. Go ahead, guys. Which one of you starts first? Do you have any of the stuff anymore? Okay, so do you both read that one together? Okay, go.
Pigs, pigs can even be trained to pull a small cock. Pigs like to roll in water in order to walk. Pigs will grunt when they are happy, pigs will squirm when they are hurt by the sun. They follow pigs' calling, why in water, if his call is, maybe pigs' call is. Many people think that pigs are dumb and dirty, and pigs are among the most intelligent of the tenures. Pigs keep themselves cleaner than most of the other marine ones. Happy National Pig Day.
Be a good one. You guys did really good, I want you to be terrible.
I love reading at summer school, and when that's over, I love anchor charts all, almost every day. I love making pictures on the chicken, shiyan again. I like doing pictures and writing and coloring. I, like, when we go to a small group, we whisper that, and going to a big group, too, with those teachers, I want to go to summer school, but before we can to summer school, I do not want to go again.
Ready, lad, you're with? Are you lad, you're with? Good. Playing something tonight, you read about anchor charts, can you tell them what an anchor chart is? It was a big piece of what?
Paper.
Paper, and what was on that paper?
Things.
I thought you read that one. So the anchor chart is, as we read, they do any prior knowledge they might have, and then after they read, they go back and add things that they learned. So the anchor charts stay up all week for that foundation of learning.
Yeah, titles, table of conscience, any of these, that's in the issue. We learned about the mountain, Mount Everest, and Shian again, too. We learned to chomp our words, when there are two words that have the same letter, right? This letter. And you chomp, and we took it. We, we learned about if I want BK plus TC equals I background, knowledge, background, text clue, oo, oo's, and interesting, and it helped me read.
What plus what?
BK means background, knowledge.
What?
Plus TC, text clues. And I means interesting.
And they put sticky notes in books and on texts as they're written, so they kind of do like background, things I already know, or things I've inferred, so. Okay, read it again. Oh, you already read, sorry, you read. Okay, Jasmine, your turn. Ready? Can you tell them your name? I'm gonna scoot you back here just a little bit, so you're good. Can you tell them your name?
Jasmine.
And tell them what school you go to.
South Florida.
Okay, let me help you hold this up, or do you want to read it while you're, and then we'll turn it around and show up. Tell them what look you're on.
Shian, they live on the ferry. His dad, Shian's dad, wanted him to go to school, so he survived. They make a house of animals. They make kinds of places to use the egg. So he, they're escaping. He cries in there because he wants to hold on.
That's good, you can show up, turn it around, let me see your work. That's a story map that she made, so remember the important points of the story that she wrote. You read it, then we'll turn it around. And Tony is Jasmine's brother, and they happen to be in the same group, so, he's got the same story, Shian again.
They only speak English. One teacher was mean to his boy. The boy escaped school to fight home. Mommy's forty percent, fourth percent. He cheated, he lied, and failed. True.
Okay. All right, you wanna turn around, show your man. Yeah, really good time, you guys slide your cane? Slide your cane, somewhere where you can. Yeah, you guys slide your cane, thanks, guys.
I have a special, if someone wanted to like.
Yeah, I showed up at exactly the wrong. Didn't I choose?
No, I noticed that.
This is how rumors get started.
Yeah. The lamb was not willing to kiss that.
What did you do back to sleep? I wasn't.
I think we got time here. Next on our, in our agenda is, at this time, we call public comment, we have one person that has signed, we'll let him go first, and what I'm saying is after that, then I'll ask if anyone else here that would like to address the board, uh, after, Mr. DeVille. Topic, people in Raleigh, people in Raleigh. My topic was new people in Raleigh. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, um, I'm coming to you tonight, gotten some phone calls the past few weeks, some anxious emails, my guess is you all probably have too, concerning budget contractions in Raleigh, and how that plays out here in, in Macon County. Specifically, I had emails and calls about media specialist positions. I met with Dr. Baldwin this afternoon, he's very gracious with his time, and we went over the financial reality of, um, of what we're facing here in Macon County, as far as the, uh, the budget contractions, how that, and how that play out. And I think it's important for my fellow teachers and my fellow Macon County citizens to put blame in the right place. Uh, if we're gonna fix the problem, we need to diagnose exactly what the problem is, and direct our limited energy, our limited resources towards addressing, uh, that problem, and not, um, put blame in the wrong place, um, and fight amongst ourselves when we should be directing our energies elsewhere. Um, just a few things I want to touch on. The proposed personnel, adjusted personnel roster that you're looking at this evening, Dr. Baldwin shared with me this afternoon, um, has got several cuts in it. Just to quickly review, so the public is informed of what's, what we're facing here, and I would, I would put an asterisk on this, this is in addition to everything that we have lost in terms of personnel in the last several years, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I, I know that they're substantial. So this is, these are additional positions that we're absorbing here in Macon County. Two positions, uh, at East Franklin that probably won't be replaced. Uh, two positions at Franklin High School, including, um, a language teacher. Um, I, I saw students a week before I took off on vacation, coming back over to the high school, they'd signed up for Spanish 3 and 4. Their only other alternative was to take that course on North Carolina Virtual Public School, they decided that that was a poor educational option for them. Imagine trying to learn a foreign language online, learning anything online is difficult, especially when you're young, and then you're gonna make that a foreign language, so they, they were changing their schedule on that. We also lost an English teacher there. Highland School, uh, is losing, it looks like maybe one position overall. Iowa Valley, a position. There's not many people left over here at the central office, it looks like. It looks like nine people, nine positions, uh, with four of the, nine people leaving, and four of those people being replaced by contract services. So, that's a tremendous cut, right here in this building alone. Two and a half positions, it looks like, in the middle. Another position at Mountain View, and it looks like one and a half positions at Manahela, in a school that's small, I, I can't imagine just what one and a half, and again, in addition to everything that all the schools have had to deal with in the past three or four years. Roster, no one would be sent home. Okay, now that's notwithstanding whatever is finally decided in the budget deal, which is still, the details, as of 5 o'clock tonight, have not been made public. There, if you look at the House numbers, there's an additional $137 million in discretionary cuts. If you look at the Senate version, $175 million, so if they meet somewhere in the middle, whatever else that we have to deal with, there's an additional $150 million, and that's, that's people. Uh, so, maybe four more positions that somehow we would have to absorb here in Macon County. This current roster, again, it protects jobs, it protects the classroom, at the moment, uh, it protects the 2% supplement. I note that the county commissioners see that money, that's $750,000 discretionary, that we could, if we chose to, if this board, Dr. Baldwin chose to, they could use those monies to employ, to fill in personnel gaps. Mr. DeVille, I think it's 4:30. It's 4:30, I'm saying, I thought it was, and they wrote it, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for that correction, thank you, thank you. So, anyway, see that, see that money as discretionary, again, the teachers in Macon County who fought, you know, to, to get that, um, and who have relied upon that, we don't see that as discretionary. The impact with these contractions is more burnout, more people leaving us, more turnover. Can we make up the gap? Can teachers work a little bit harder? I think they can. Gary Brown's letter, I thought, was one of the most eloquent, uh, concise statements as the state of education is in, in Macon County, and we have done more with less. The statistic I can give the media and other people in the room tonight, the Annie Casey Foundation, which is a well-respected think tank, recently ranked North Carolina as 28th in the nation of public education, that's on a 48th or 49th in the country per pupil spending. So, that's a heck of a bargain. And that is dealing with here in North Carolina, an 8% increase in poverty over the past four to five years. So, I think it's important for us as a school community to stay united, to put the blame where it's due. The General Assembly had talked the last several years about merit pay, they do not have the money to do merit pay properly, but what we are dealing with, I would argue, is that we are dealing with a reverse merit pay situation. In other words, Raleigh has put the gun to the various LEAs heads, to the various state boards' heads, to the central offices' head, and basically say, you have X number of positions, which 10 people do you want to fire? Since we're not gonna give extra pay to the top 10%, the top 20%, whatever, we want you just to eliminate your bottom 5%, your bottom 10%, which is a cruel business, but that appears to be the business that Raleigh is into. Uh, the tax cuts, which were originally projected to create a budget shortfall this year of $500 million, if you saw on the paper last Friday, that number is now at $700 million. And that's not including the tax cuts that just went into effect for this coming fiscal year, so we're gonna look at an even bigger budget hole. If we think that we're in bad shape for 2014, 2015, nobody in this room has seen anything yet, because the situation, when we start to go to put the budget together this coming March, April, May, is gonna be far more dire than what we're dealing with right now. And so, I'll close with, um, thank you, Dr. Baldwin, for this time, and all of his work, and thanking this board for all of your time protecting our jobs, protecting the classroom as best you can, protecting our supplement as best you can, um, making the tough choices, prioritizing expenditures the way that you have. And I would like, again, just from this platform, to urge my fellow teachers and the other citizens of Macon County, if, if you're upset, let's not get upset with the people who work in this room, 'cause I think they're doing a hell of a job, and I don't think that they can be doing it any better. If you're gonna get upset, we need to be getting upset with people that are about 500 miles or so west of here, so I ask that we can stay united. I'm sorry, you know, I've caught you honestly a lot, but, 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 been on a north-south axis here, and I'm still getting over it on my, on my trip. So, um, I'll leave it at that, and again, thank you all very much for what you have done. Thank you. Anything to do with, Dr. Baldwin?
When we start discussing personnel, I've got a statement that, if you can, if you will, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. DeVille was the only one that put on, is anyone else here that would like to address the board, or anything that you might have that you'd like to talk to us about? Okay, we'll move on. Again, thank you, Mr. DeVille. Put your attention to item three, and our agenda, informational items first, Mr. Jeter, Highland Schools discretionary students, is this something that the board needs to look at and we'll need to approve? Jeter?
These are simply students who applied, I'll get on, live in the Highland School District. Summer from Franklin, Jackson County, uh, Georgia. I think that's it.
I was like, what, the children next to Georgia are from the community?
These, uh, yeah, they, they work, there's, we have one family, the Barnes family, has four children in our school, um, and the Nix, the Nixes work for the town of Highlands. So they're, basically, they all live closer to the Highlands, it takes them a few minutes to get to Highlands, it would take us probably 45 minutes to get to Redmond County.
And also very far, they're all part of Ball.
They're a part of, quite frankly. And some of them are just barely over the line, a few feet here or there makes a difference.
Can you describe to, just, I should know this, when you have something custody, is that just simply children have been put in?
It's an affidavit A or B, sometimes it's assigned by the court, sometimes it's assigned, say a parent in Florida has an aunt in Highlands, and they give up their custodial rights to that aunt in Highlands.
Remember this, do you have questions, Mr. Jeter?
We do, we do, um, checks on all of the students' academic attendance, behavior, backgrounds, these are all, these are the kids who pass the background checks.
Any questions? I'm not here to motion to approve the list. I'm thinking of making a brief, and Tommy's second. Any other discussion, all in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose, so moved. Next one, it's overnight, our district trip, so as I said, we added that one too, which was for men's cross-country, and I explained hopefully what it was about, go ahead, any other questions? Not very good motion to approve. Motion to approve the request for men's cross-country, Mr. Chiles give a second. All in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose, so moved. Fundraising request, Franklin High School, Pam. This is for the JV varsity.
Yes, these are the same fundraisers that they do every year. The first one that's up, I can't read it personally, is the breast cancer awareness, it's been done for, this has been the seventh year, in memory of Martin Fett, who was heavily involved in volleyball, and her children were heavily involved in sports, and they basically sell the T-shirts and do a, like a pink out, or whatever color they've chosen at one of their volleyball games. The students are not required to sell the T-shirts, but they do. It's a pretty successful fundraiser.
I think they take a lot of pride.
They do, it can take a lot of time. Uh, the second one that's coming up is the peanuts, the peanut roaster, they, years ago, they did the cookies, you know, the frozen cookies, whatever, this is a much better fundraiser, it tends to go over much better, again, it's something that they've done. It's used for the equipment, the students are supposed to sell 20 cans apiece, which they easily do. And then the third one that's coming up would be the team sponsorships on the T-shirts, they use that to help under bases and cover some of their personal stuff, like their bags or warm-ups and that type of thing, and again, it goes under very well, it's very easily sold by the students, that sufficiently raise that money fairly easily.
A motion to approve.
Any motion to approve all three requests, Mr. Chiles, I have motion in a second, we've all three requests, a ball of tea, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose, so moved. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
I think it's on Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Gibbs. Early College PTSO fundraiser.
Uh, yes, sir, the only new one on here is the fall flower bulb sale raffle for, uh, well, the load of firewood is not, I delivered that last year, promptly got stuck in people's yard, but I've looked into it. yard, but I've looked into it. We got it delivered. The gravel and mulch and the firewood are all repeats. The fall flower bulb sale is a new one that we're going to do. Kids are going to go door-to-door. The profits from the fundraisers can go support teacher requests for classroom supplies, you can read that up there. They also sponsor our, our new kickoff-the-year cookout for the freshmen and the upperclassmen invited, we do that on the first Friday of school. They help with the dances that we have, we have one first semester they help from. They do a lot, they print off our programs for graduation, and they help us appliance.
Any questions, Mr. Gibbs?
I'm sure.
A motion to approve, very second. All in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Mazlin, Macon Middle School fundraiser, PTO and volleyball.
I want to know, yet, Ms. Kate made me real happy, knowing that my wife and my daughter are going to be doing a lot for volleyball, so I'm not going to tell her, maybe I can get a couple weeks of enjoyment out of the summer left. PTO, they sell T-shirts and use it at open house, and for $10 and hoodies for 25, to give them some makeup, middle school spirit wear, I guess you could call it, so they'll be doing that. They do that every year. And then the second one is volleyball, wants to have a car wash on, I think it's the 16th, if I'm not mistaken, and at Mountain Federal Credit Union, to raise money for equipment, uniforms.
How many adults will be there at that point?
Um, I'd say, you know what, that's a good question, but I know that the coach and assistant coach are going to be there.
Have a question, Macon Middle School, for two fundraisers, PTO, volleyball, are there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve fundraiser, that's right.
A motion second, all in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Moving on to personnel, we have sections, what I'd like to do is, flexibly, addition we had was Lindy Beck and the new personnel, she's going to be a pretty good teacher in Olive Valley. So, basically, in the personnel, section A, B, C, and D, and E, I would entertain a motion unless there's some questions that we just approve those en masse. Does that mean?
Chairman, can I make one adjustment?
Yes, Mr. Bill.
On section A. Donna Trammell is down there, as a term of termination, she's not being terminated, she's just been removed from such a position, because she's taken another position outside the school.
Kid's request to be removed, correct, so it's not a termination, that's actually just a request, okay? So noted, it's just her, her request to be removed, such a, exactly. Any other changes? Like a ball, Mr. Bill? If not, I'm in motion, unless any other board members would approve all the noted sections A through E.
Any questions? I make a motion to approve A through E with the exception of Donna Trammell, all just changes as to be removed and to add Lindy Beck to that, that's a great take.
I have a motion that's given by, so, Pam, second. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Thank you, board.
Mr. Jim, can I make a comment now, at 9:00, Mr. Bill, about any reference to section A or there? As you can see, we do have several vacancies with ongoing interviews throughout our school system, and to be perfectly honest, we do, the principals of these schools, in most cases, have recommendations ready to go for the board's approval. And what we're waiting on is final word from the General Assembly of the State as to what our actual budget's going to be for the 14, 15 school year. At this point, we do not know. What we do know, based on what has occurred over the weekend, and this is from media sites, not actually formal word from the State, but my understanding is that the Senate and House have reached a compromise in regard to teacher pay, which includes a 7.2% raise for teachers. Now, they allocated this money, where they've agreed to a compromise on this raise, but the issue is they've not increased funding for K-12 education. And basically, what that means is that they're going to fund the raise, that 7.2% pay increase, from other areas in K-12. And what that basically means is cuts, which means people. There was a statement from a legislator earlier in the school year, and the comment was, teachers will get a raise, but there will be fewer of them to receive it. And that's what we're seeing, that's what we're dealing with in terms of the recommendations that we'll be making for employment, and what we're holding back on recommendations forward and not. All of us are concerned about the fact that our school system has not been able to rehire each position that was vacated as someone retired or left our system. But until we actually receive that allotment from the State, we can make very few hires, because we know, the bottom line is, we're going to have fewer teachers and fewer teacher assistants than we did last year. So, while I'm very grateful that our teachers are beginning to raise, we just need to be able to deal with the cuts that are going to come in the other areas to help fund that raise. And I thank Mr. Bill for his comments tonight, and I hope that, that our community and especially our teachers understand that these cuts that we're being forced to make are not decisions that we're making as a board, because, that I'm making a recommendation to the board for you to decide that these positions are not needed, or that they're in the best interest of our students, or what they're actually, the reason behind this funding.
Very well said, Dr. Baldwin. I want to bear with me, what excuses or maybe apologies to previous boards, I'm going to make a statement that I hope, I think is true, I think this board, this year and next year, will be faced with some of the hardest, most difficult decisions any board in history of this county's been faced with. But most likely, we'll do the best we can, but it is a very suffering fact of our landscape, that's what's going on, so.
I agree with you, I've been here a while, and today, the first few years, simple compared to what it's been for like a couple of years, and this, it's scary.
I look forward to an opportunity to decide where would be the best place to spend money, rather than the best place to pet, but, yeah, it'd be nice.
Any other board members have anything to say? No? Again, thank you, Dr. Baldwin, move on. I think the remainder of section four really is nothing of interest, I think, no renewals or non-renewals, is that correct, Mr. Bill? Moving into policy section of our agenda first, on the agenda is Mr. Jetter, the Highland School handbook.
There are no substantive changes in this, pretty much the same one we've had for, I don't know, five years, six years. I keep trying, I keep trying to grab the layers.
No, no change. There are motions to approve the handbook, have a second. I have a motion second, all in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Mr. Mazlin, Macon Middle School.
We've got a couple, Ms. Lynch is part of her graduates, that he's had to do one of these, so she, she made some changes on page five to our dress code, and one of them's quite entertaining. Number two says that no shorter than four inches above the knee, approximate credit card, like, I've had bigger credit cards than that, apparently, than we do here. That's one long credit card, but, basically, she highlighted, we highlighted the whole thing, there's a couple things in there. Number five, it used to be if you had a hole and you had, in your pants, above your pockets, and you could see skin or clothing, now everybody has holes, as long as you cannot see any skin and there's clothing under it, we're not going to, we're not going to chase that dog around the parking lot anymore, so we're, we're done with that one. And then, we just stated in the dress code infractions, what we're going to be doing, that's down farther in between one and two, and basically, tobacco policy, first one's going to be a verbal warning, because a lot of times, we don't catch them using it, we just catch them with it, and so we're going to verbal warning, have a parent call the parents, and then we'll go to our pay of ISS, so on and so forth. And then number seven, cell phones. Wish we could say we can't bring them to school, but I could say that, but that's not going to do a bit of good. So, our first offense now, we used to call, first offense used to be, as soon as we picked up your phone the first time, if it was out in class, parent had to come pick it up. Now, we're just going to allow the student to pick it up, call the parent, and move to the second offense, because we are, we're having a lot of them buzz in class, and it's, again, it's today's society, whether I like it or not, I guess I'm caving to peer pressure on the, where what we've become.
So, what are you allowing with cell phone?
We don't allow them out, but sometimes a cell phone will ring in a class, because a kid may have it off. And we've been having, take the cell phone, and having parents come in the first day, and inconvenience them. Now, we're going to allow the parent, the student to pick up the phone, we're going to call the parent, but instead of having the parent come in and get it, we're going to just turn it over to the student at the end of the day.
So, you're still taking the phone?
We're still taking the phone, but we're going to call the parent, instead of making them come in.
You're just trying to make it a little easier.
Just a little easier, I mean, accidents happen one time, it's kind of a big thing, so. And then cafeteria rules, if you throw food, you're going home for a day. Middle school students, we don't have a lot of it, but that's an in my own written rule, I think Mr. Shields runs it at high school, they're too old to be throwing food, you want to throw food, go home and throw it at home. So, we're just not going to deal with that now, it's in here. We have very few instances of that, but we're just putting in there, so it's, it's clear. Anti-bullying, we just added that in there, put that in and just cleaned it up a little bit. Weapons and bomb threats, we just went to our policy. We added general consequences for, put that in there, made sure that they're aware of what can happen if you bring these, these items to school. And then for attendance, we're just trying to restate that, we, we battle attendance constantly, so we just wanted to emphasize it, and we just put it in there and let them know about the 20 days, and what, what we have to do legally. Tardy policy, that's another one, can't get people to work on time, it's hard to get kids to school on time, but we are battling it, we're going to try to get them there on time, but I think we've cut our attendance, our attendance is a lot better than it's ever been, but we are still probably, Jason would tell you, we're probably the worst school as far as perpetuencies. We had 27 the year before last, I'm sure we're in the 30s this year. We need them at school to take it serious, so we're just putting our tardy policy in there, to make the parents aware of it. So, there's some changes, yes, but everything else should be pretty much the same. Medication, that's, we're just restating that and making sure, we have bolded it out, so they could, we always have parents wanting to bring standard ibuprofen with them in their baggie to school, and that becomes an item, an issue also.
I'd make a motion to accept the handbook, as presented.
A motion to second, accepts, as presented, changes. All in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Good luck, Mr. Mazlin, I'm impressed, hope it works.
I'd also like to say, appreciate you. Yes, sir.
I got a question for you, in the sports medicine, could you use that?
Oh, sure.
Do you want to do that, man? Embarrassing, make him stand up, I think that's a problem.
You have a, you're the school board candidate, I'm the friend, fellow mentor, colleague, coach, Franklin High School, glad to have you tonight.
I have a second one, too, Mr. Bill Tyrell, also.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you both for coming, both to get a sense of what we do, encourage you to come to everyone you're possibly come to. As busy said, only to make you change your mind. Mr. Bryan, that Haila School handbook.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, no changes for the Haila School, but other than the ones noted here, these all are in reference to going from a block schedule to a six-period schedule, so we had to reword what the high school attendance would be. Normally, it was 10 absences, it's now a year-long, so it follows the same number of absences as elementary and middle schools, so it's 20 absences. And so, we just had to go back in on page four, six, and seven, to go ahead and reword it, so that the attendance is the same. And of course, meal prices, and that's it. So, we just had an update based on our new schedule of this 2014, 15 school year.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to commend Mr. Bryan for being proactive in changing his schedule to six-period day, and basically, what he's doing there is gaining himself some flexibility, the school's flexibility, in the event that the budget continues to contract on the next couple of school years.
I'd make a motion to accept the handbook, as presented.
Much to accept, very second, the motion is second, all in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. How does it look, we have several?
You may just do them all together, and one?
I want to support the pledge, we'd just like to look all in, approve them en masse, we ask questions, you go through, so, we've got, what, two, three, four, six, eight, nine of them. For yours.
So, the first one is with Teach out of Asheville, we are asking for a contract with them for consultation services, we've had this for the last several years, we've not had to use it, but if we need them, we have to have this in place, that'll be paid for out of, if we use it, except from children funds. Just for kids therapy contract, that's our physical therapy services, we've had this contract for as long as I can remember, also paid out of except from children funds. Contract with Olga Pater for school psychology, she does our evaluations for bilingual students, and right now, we are still looking for a school psychologist, and hopefully, we can beg her to help with some other evaluations if, in the event we can't find someone, and we don't have any applications, so if you know someone, we'd love to hear about it. The next two are AIG contracts we've had for several years, Renee Bolt works with our AG students in Highlands, and Joe Woolfer works with our elementary AG students in the Franklin area, so those are paid out of AG funds. Savita Adams works with some of our hearing impaired students, teaching sign language, younger students that are just learning the basics of sign language, paid out of exceptional children funds. Martha Wyatt, speech therapy, she covers speech services at Macon Middle School, paid out of speech, uh, speech funds, EC funds. Nancy Curly, we want a contract with her to help case manage the EC students at Macon Early College. They don't really need a teacher on site, but someone to keep up with the paperwork and just check in with them, help manage their services. And then, a New Hope Home Care contract, this is a new contract, Mr. Hennings looked at it, for a student who's going to need nursing services.
I think most of these are all just repetitive, and thanks for all the work you did to get them together, although I make a motion to accept all contracts as presented.
Much to accept all the contracts, I'm second, we're presenting, any other discussion? Question? If not, all in favor, say my saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Thank you, Paul. Sports medicine agreement, Angel Medical Center, Mr. Hennings.
Mr. Chairman, this is substantially the same agreement that we had last year with Angel Medical Center, for provision of a trainer, and also a sports medicine doctor when occasion arises. And I have reviewed it all, and some changes went back and forth, but there really weren't anything terribly substantial. I would point out to you, this is for a term through 2017 school year, so have it in place a good bit longer, I think, as far as I know, everybody's been really happy with the patent in the past year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but again, substantially the same contract, and I would recommend you.
I have a question. When, maybe, it's always been this way, it's under, three, no, it's under 4C, 2B, Mr. Mason. So involved in the middle school, that you have athletic associations sanction home games and...
Ours is not sanctioned by high school athletic association, we have a middle school athletic, whole different bylaws than the high school, I don't know about that.
That's what I'd say, unless something has changed.
I think we need this, because we accept hospital teams that, like our soccer team that play at the middle school, correct?
I'd just talk about Macon Middle School athletics.
Athletics.
Yeah, I think that is a typo and should get changed to.
Our plan, middle school athletic association.
The middle school sanction.
We'll, we'll get that fixed, so if you would approve this subject to that change.
Make most of the incentive subject to the change.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved.
Okay, I will think. That, that contract does not have any, a big story, it's, it's pre-service.
We're aware that...
I'm sure that's what we talked about.
What we're given last year, and we assume that, that it's under laws and standards the same way, so this is for three years, correct?
Yes.
My math's right, Mr. Jennings? Very valuable service that the center's providing for it. Got no choppers, they're there. And I think you're exactly right, they're there every game, it's like they promised us. Moving in curriculum instruction, I don't think, is there anything there, Dr. Baldwin? Says none, just writing. Okay, bills of grounds, Mr. Bell, Cowie School Celebration Bus Uses.
Yeah, the Cowie School is, their heritage organization's willing to use them. They put in that request, our 18-passenger activity bus, and we've changed that, it's gonna be a 36-passenger. We really don't, that would be a handicap bus and pay 105 is what they want, and so we've broken that, so it should be, it's a 36-passenger.
Any questions? No? That motion's approved.
I'd like a motion to approve the bus uses.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. Businesses Finance, Angie. Redistributions, Cardtika Jay.
We just have the one and it's, they're actually new, we could feature money, $3,000 over the end of the general fund, and then $573 for free into the long-distance telephone to travel or short.
And what do we get the $573 for? The bum?
Out of the school feature money.
And it's, that's just money the principal has to give.
Yes, that is true.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the redistribution for Cardtika Jay, do you hear a second? Second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. Board of Education Information, discussion of Saks accreditation, Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Contral.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we've had several discussions about whether or not we should reapply for Saks accreditation, go through the process this year. From what we've been able to determine, especially under the current budget situation, this is not something that I would recommend that Macon County School System take part in this year. To be honest with you, they've also been surprised that in all of our discussions regarding Saks accreditation, I've not had, I've received a single call from the community or from schools concerned about our decision not to go through this process or our consideration for a decision to go through this process. Have you heard any negative feedback from this county? So it doesn't appear that there's much community or school concerned about our not going back through the accreditation. We are state accredited, from what Ms. Contral has learned, at stake. And our budget is very, very tight at this point, and there's a lot of uncertainty about the budget at this time, so if you're not ready to dash in, we don't pursue Saks accreditation.
Is that what's going to stabilize it? I will say this, this will save us a lot of that.
I think we pay about $12,000 a year just to be members, and then when we have our site visit, it's considerably more because we have to host the people that come, so it hits up to about 15,000 to maybe 20,000.
I'd like most of you to accept, from law and regulation, not to have Saks accreditation year, school year 2014-15.
Second.
Do we have to limit that year or have it just moving forward and we come back out and vote to change it, what would be best? Is this a yearly thing?
No, it's a, it's every five years that we have our site visit. So our site visit, we were due for that in the spring of 2015.
To be determined.
To be determined. That motion that we called the regulation of our superintendent that we did not pursue the Saks accreditation, that motion is second, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. I think it's a very good decision. Thank you. Strategic Plan Update, Nancy.
We had a strategic committee come together and we had several meetings to look at our old strategic plan and develop a new one. The people that served on our committee were, we represented elementary, middle school, high school board members. We looked at strategic plans throughout the state, at different ones, and we decided as a group that we would have two major goals. The first one would be, students being successful by being college and career-ready. And the strategy would be that each individual school develops and implements a school improvement plan that addresses their instructional needs. So we didn't put specific goals in there because every school's different. So we're letting them come up with those in their school improvement plan, and then that will address that, that particular need. Also, in their individual school improvement plans, they also will address what staff development will be needed in order to implement that. We have to, schools that are Title I evidently have to have reading and math goals anyways, and they always do, so that's what our school improvement plans will most likely be. And then our second goal is that our students here in Macon County will be helping responsible citizens of their community. And again, by doing that, every school will determine a plan to address an environment that will promote healthy, safe, will promote healthy schools and a safe environment for students. Also, every school will address how they will involve parents. And lastly, individual schools will coordinate with a program called Communities in School, the Great Smoky Mountains. And what this is, it's a free program that helps us, they, they work with schools to determine their needs, especially if students at risk, and then they go into the community and try to find those resources that that school would need. So if we have, let's say, at an elementary school, Iowa Elementary School, we might have 20 identified students that are at risk, and they're at risk because they can't get their school supplies, or they don't have warm coats, or they, that type of thing, then this school, this agency will help us go out into the community and find resources for those kids. That's how we would coordinate to work with our businesses and our community members to be supported in our school. So, that's it. And we, if you all agree with this, we want to post this on our website, but we want to pretty it up a little bit by adding a title page or a cover page that talks a little bit about Macon County schools, our student population, our schools, some of our successes that we've experienced in the past few years as well.
Any questions, Nancy?
Under the Macon County School strategic plan, if you roll it to the top, of 2014, 2015, can I have it inserted?
Sure.
I think it's something we do need board approval on. Anything else under that category, Dr. Baldwin? Superintendent Information.
In your package, you have a list of kind of events. Tomorrow we've got a principal's meeting, we'll be talking about legislative update and recording procedures and, and issues. Wednesday, July 30th, preseason coaches meeting at the factory. Tuesday through Thursday, August 5th through 7th, bus stop training at the boardroom here at the Macon County Medical Center offices. Monday, August 11th through Friday, August 15th, Lennamville training in the boardroom here. And on Tuesday, August 12th, at the Franklin High School Fine Arts Center, we'll have iPad information up beginning at 7:00 PM. We'll be agreeing on 7:00 PM, and that'll be open to anyone that's concerned or might have any questions. Tim, you want to just update where we are in the iPad?
Yeah, as you know, we're getting ready to implement a one-to-one at high school level in the fall. We have received all the iPads, we've given them set up now, it's a long, arduous process that we're, we're...
You're smiling like you're having fun.
Oh, yeah.
They've, they've all been down there in that room all day long.
We will be for the next week. But we're getting those set up for the students, so when the students receive those iPads, they're completely set up for them. They don't have to go in and set up their accounts and everything, and that will alleviate some stress in the classroom and everything there. We had some comments and some testimonials, I guess, on the iPad program that we have done, and we wanted to clarify some things, so we created an FAQ, we actually created four FAQs, one for parents, one for students, one for... Teachers, I'm sorry. Teachers, and we created a general FAQ. Those are all posted on the website. The general FAQ is on the front page of the website, we have it translated in Spanish as well. So I hope that alleviates some, some concerns about, about how we're doing it and how we're implementing this stuff. So it's available there, I can, I can show you where it's at real quick if you'd like. Both FAQs are down here on the left, that's the general FAQ, and it just gives a lot of, a lot of detailed, good information about the iPad implementation.
You know, I'll make a comment here if it's okay, the impetus behind this, it comes back to funding again. What we're having to do at this point is use local funds to provide textbooks to students, whereas in the past, the state has funded textbook allotment. The state's still funding textbook allotment, but at the rate, at only the rate that we can pay for digital textbooks, at $14, $15 per student. At $14 or $15 per student, we cannot purchase textbooks, and the only thing we can purchase is a digital textbook, but you have to have the device to deliver the textbook. Also with iPads, we're also replacing the number of personal computers at the high school, so it's, we're actually doing two things with this initiative.
ESL, ESL, where is it? Okay. You know, the, it's, it's right along with your... We that can help us out on that, we appreciate it.
Apparently you haven't picked up either copies of last year's newspaper, 'cause it's in both of them.
I guess, thank you for getting that in there. Thank you. Bottom line is, I'll take my own statements, I don't, I think there's just misinformation and people didn't quite understand what we're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I right in saying that?
I think so, I think there was some, well, they, they didn't really understand how we're going, how we're going to implement it and why, and I think the why is more important than how. We're trying to provide textbooks for the students, basically. I think giving a device to students for simply to save, given a technology device for technology safety is the wrong thing to do. I think we're, we're implementing this correctly, and we have a firm goal of why we're doing it, so I think, I think FAQ will clear some of those.
I think another point, too, is that this has been in our technology plan for a number of years, I think one problem is we've had three superintendents in three years, and that technology plan's just not been, maybe discussed as much as it should out of the superintendents, which is understandable because we have three superintendents in three years.
And we plan for this, build up the infrastructure, we've put in the Bible, we've had that ready, we've used the rest of the top name, we've been in the wireless network infrastructure behind it, and we're good there, so I think we're ready for it.
We're good, just working these superintendents for a while now.
I hope so.
So anyway, I think that's just it. We have the information, I think we encourage anyone in the community that have any questions to ask us.
First, please contact me or like Baldwin and you both answer the questions.
Very good. Thanks, Tim. Dr. Baldwin, anything else?
Well, actually I do have two other coming in. On Monday, August 18th, again at 8:00 AM, we'll have a new employee orientation here in the boardroom, and also on the 18th at 6:00 PM, we'll have our next employee.
We have a closed session if necessary, is there any, I was gonna say, our problems indicate there is, so Mr. Chairman, I'll look to you, if you would please give us a reason for our closed session.
Okay. It will not be for approval, out of this information on personnel. That's 143-318246, discuss personnel.
I'd make a motion to go into a collective session because I'm not just...
All in favor? No, that's for information purposes. All in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved.
And you're welcome.